Now presenting ourselves in thanksgiving for this opportunity that you have presented for us to hear your word. We pray therefore that as we are seated here to hear your word, that you be present and that you teach us from the heart of the Father. Spirit of the living God, may you prepare our hearts that we may hear that which the Father has to say to us. And we pray that our hearts be fertile ground that will produce a hundredfold of the word of God. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth, we pray by faith. Amen. So for this Bible study session, we are looking at the topic, the Passion of Christ. So we are going to be appreciating the journey to the Passover. We will be looking at Christ from the week of entering into Jerusalem all the way to his crucifixion. Our foundational scripture for this series is found in the book of John, chapter 3, verse 16. Now, this is a worldwide known verse because it is a core verse to our salvation. It is the most important verse because it tells us exactly what our salvation is about. It reads, "For God so loved the world, that he gave his only begotten son, that whomever believes in him should not perish, but have everlasting life." Now, what this verse tells us is that God loved us so much that he was moved to act on our behalf. Now, we know we were under the control of the evil one, so we were led or under the sway of the devil. But God, loving us so much, would not let us die without him, but sent his son to die in our stead. And so, he loved us so much that he gave his only begotten son. So it was a sacrificial offering. His love drove him to sacrifice on our behalf. So now, we are going to be looking into what the Passion of Christ means. If we look at the word Passion, for most of us, we are familiar with this word. When we use it, we are usually talking about a strong emotion about something or someone. Hence, most of us would talk about being passionate about our jobs or passionate about an opinion. So basically, this speaks of us having a strong emotion towards our job or our opinion. But when we look at it in the context of Christ, we will have to go to the original text or the original word. And this comes from the Latin language. And the word, the original word is passionis, which means suffering. So when we are talking about the Passion of Christ, we are speaking of the suffering of Christ. So what we will be looking at in this series is the sufferings of Christ between the night of the Last Supper and his death. So we are looking at the suffering and death of the Lord Jesus Christ. We will come to appreciate this as we move on with the teachings on this subject. What we are going to look at now is the week of the Passion. So the week of the Passion of Jesus Christ is an account of the last days of his life, from the triumphal entry into Jerusalem to Mount Calvary. So what we will see here is the word of God being fulfilled. So everything that scripture foretold, we will see it come to fruition. We will get to see God's faithfulness and truthfulness to his word, for we will see every prophecy of scripture fulfilled in Christ in this last week. And what this helps us see is the authenticity of the word. It is the unequivocal historicity of the word of God. So we appreciate the truth of God in scripture being revealed in this week. Now, this week is a build-up to the climax of his death on the cross. It is worth noting that this is the purpose of his birth. Now, we will appreciate one thing, that if ever there was anything that the Lord Jesus knew, it was his purpose. He knew exactly what it is that the Father had sent him to the earth realm for. He knew exactly that which was required of him. Now, there were many instances where he could have fallen short of the mandate of God, but because he knew exactly what it is that the Father desired, he stayed true to it, even when there was fear, even when there was doubt, even when there was temptation. But because he held on to God's word or to God's assignment, he remained driven to a certain goal, which also speaks to us that it is important for us to know God's purpose for our lives. And most of us can attest to the fact that when you do not know your purpose, you walk about aimlessly and you get stuck in depression because you do no point in your life. But with Christ, he knew exactly that he should not be afraid of death, because that is exactly what he came here for, to such a point that in John, chapter 12, we find him predicting his death. And so, he says in verse 27 of the chapter, "Now my soul is troubled, and what shall I say? Father, save me from this hour; but for this purpose I came to this hour." So there may have been fears and doubts as to what is about to take place, but because he knew that this was the purpose of the Father, he carried on and he pressed on. In fact, even in the garden of Gethsemane, there he cries out and he says, "Father, take this cup away from me." But then you find him again saying, "You know what? Not my will, but your will be done, Lord," because he knew exactly what it is the Father required. So despite temptation, at a weak point, the Lord Jesus knew his purpose. Where is this? We find this in the book of Luke, chapter 4, when the Lord Jesus goes up on the mountain to fast. When he is done with the fast, before he even gets to eat, there comes the devil to tempt him. He tempts him with food and he tempts him with authority. But the one temptation that strikes me is when the devil says to the Lord in Luke, chapter 4, verse 6, he says, "All this authority," sorry, it's verse 8, "he says, 'All this authority I will give you, and their glory; for this has been delivered to me, and I give it to whomever I wish.'" Now, this is the devil tempting Jesus, and he says, "Bow down to me, and I will give you what you came here for." Now, this is a shortcut, and the devil always comes to us with a shortcut as well, where he comes to trick us into doing things his way. And when we start doing things the devil's way, we are no longer glorifying God. So Jesus, knowing the will of the Father, knew that if he bowed to the devil, although he received what, he may have received what the devil had, but it was not, would have not been the right way or the legal way in which he was required to get it. And so, also with us, you'll find the devil presenting shortcuts. He will present things that will seem to be for our benefit, but we always need to remember that the devil never comes for our good, no matter how it seems at the time, no matter how desperate we are. Because Jesus may have been desperate at this point, because whenever you are called to do God's work, most of us always assume that it's going to be an easy way all the way. But it is usually harder, because the devil is now working against you in order for you not to achieve that which God requires of you. So it is important all the time to know that even in the hard times, you never give in to that which the devil presents before you. Now, if we look at the week of the Passion, the atmosphere at this point in time for the Jews was highly emotive, as they were awaiting their Messiah, whom in their minds was to usurp the power from the Roman oppressors. Now, if anybody knew anything about oppression, it would have to be Israel, because from the inception of the nation, they were under oppression. We know God formed a new nation from scratch, when he called out Abraham from his home country, and he says, "Leave your country and all your people, and go to a land that I will show you." And so, Abraham, in obedience, goes and follows God's guidance. And through him, Isaac is born, and through Isaac, Jacob is born, and he is the father of the 12 tribes of Israel. So while there was still a small people, we know that the 12 sons of Jacob had troubles, because the 11 sons, rather, had trouble with Joseph, who was the beloved son of Jacob. And so, they start hating him, because they see that he is precious to his father. So they sell him to the Ishmaelites, who were headed to Egypt. And Joseph, then being sent to Egypt, was sold also in Egypt, but in Egypt, God grew him and raised him to be second in charge after Pharaoh. And so, Joseph was actually God's provision for the nation of Israel, because then with Joseph being there, there was a time where the world was hit by a famine. And God spoke to Israel or Jacob, saying, "It is okay for you to go down to Egypt." And so, we find that Israel or Jacob and his sons moved down to Egypt. So the Israelite nation grew in Egypt. And then, there was a time where Jacob or Joseph died, and all of his generation died. And the Pharaoh of the time knew nothing of Joseph, so he was intimidated, or the nation of Egypt was intimidated by the growth of this nation under them. And they decided that they would oppress them. However, the more they oppressed them, the more they grew. And God, being a faithful God, being true to his word, because he had spoken of this oppression, in due time, he sent Moses to be the deliverer of the nation. So they were set free and went to the land of promise. So we find also that now, the Israelites are under another oppression, and this is the oppression of the Roman Empire. There were many, many, many other oppressions. We'll see in the book of Judges, where there were nations that would oppress the nation of Israel, and God would raise judges to deliver the nation. And you find that also Jeremiah had prophesied of another oppression, and that was of the Babylonians. There was also the Greeks, there was the Medo-Persia, and then now, they are under the Roman oppression. So as they are under the Roman oppression, they are waiting for this Messiah, who is going to do the exact same work as Moses did during the Egyptian oppression. However, when Christ shows up, he comes contrary to what they believe. For Jesus, it was the fulfillment of his assignment, which was to reconcile humankind to God, the Father, once and for all. So the Lord Jesus Christ did not come to fulfill the expectations of the Israelites, but he came to do the will of the Father. You'll find that we can learn a great lesson from this, because most of us, whenever God requires us to do something, you find that there is a debate between pleasing men and pleasing God. But Jesus was able to carry out that which God required and not men. So whether men rejected him or loved him, it did not matter, because he was not here to be validated by men, but he was here to glorify and please God. Also with us, this should be what drives us, that we are here to glorify and magnify God, whether we go alone or whether we go with a crowd, whether we are celebrated or whether we are not celebrated. One thing we need to remember is that we are here to do the will of the Father. So now, as Jesus is here for this, we find that all of these things are taking place in the same week as the Passover week, which is followed immediately by the festival of unleavened bread. So we will look a great deal at the Passover feast, but we will also take a glimpse at the feast of unleavened bread, because it is very important to this subject. Now, for most people, they know the Passover, and they assume or think that it was only instituted upon the crucifixion of Christ. So for them, they think that the Passover only came about or only started when Christ was crucified. It was not called the Passover, because Jesus was crucified on that day, but it was in existence from the Old Testament. It was an important, publicly derived Jewish festival that was instituted to commemorate the liberation of Israel by God from slavery in Egypt. So remember, we spoke, we've spoken about the oppression of the Israelites. So the Passover was introduced in this oppression. When the Israelites were oppressed by God, we will know that when God was rescuing the children of Israel, he brought about the ten plagues. So the oppression by the Egyptians was the first major oppression experienced by the Israelites. It is through liberation from this oppression that the God of Israel became known among the nations of this world. So through these ten plagues, all the other nations were able to know of the God of Israel. We will know that even when the Israelites were approaching Jericho, Moses, or, yes, indeed, Moses sent spies. In fact, it was Joshua who sent spies to go and seek out the land and to survey the land, and they were hidden by a prostitute by the name of Rahab. And she says, "We have heard of your God." So they knew all the wonders of God, because they have heard of all the things that God had done, because if ever there is anything that travels, it's news. So they were able also to hear of this news of this God. In fact, even God, in the book of Exodus, chapter 9, verse 16, he says to Pharaoh, when they're negotiating the liberation of Israel, and Pharaoh seemingly thinking that he is equal to God, God says to him, "But indeed, for this purpose I have raised you up, that I may show my power in you, and that my name may be declared in all the earth." Now, the oppression of Israel was to work for the glory of God. Now, inasmuch, it was a painful situation that they were going through, but at the end, God had a plan. So you will see also with us, sometimes we'll go through rough times and situations that are not friendly or kind to us. But at the end of the day, if ever there is anything we should be willing to sacrifice ourselves for, it is the glory of God. You'll find that there are sufferings that come in many different forms and for different purposes. And even so, we will see in the book of John, chapter 9, where a blind man, where the disciples of the Lord are asking the Lord Jesus, "Who sinned between the man's parents and the man? Because the man was blind, and he was born blind." And the Lord says, "Neither the parents nor the man, but it was so that God may be glorified." So also with the Israelites, being stuck in Egypt under the oppression, it was not because of any sin, but it was because God had to be known among the world, and God had to be made manifest, and his power made manifest for many to see and acknowledge that indeed, he is the one true, all-powerful God. So the power of God was made manifest through the plagues that befell Egypt. However, the last plague became the platform to usher the Passover in. So we know there were ten plagues that God brought about in Egypt to judge the gods of the Israelites. And so, it was with the tenth plague that we get to see the Passover being introduced. He says in the book of Exodus, chapter 12, verse 12 and 13, "For I will pass through the land of Egypt on that night, and will strike all the firstborn in the land of Egypt, both men and beast, and against all the gods of Egypt I will execute judgment. I am the Lord. Now the blood shall be assigned for you on the houses where you are, and when I see the blood, I will pass over you. And the plague shall not be on you to destroy you when I strike the land of Egypt." Now, what had happened before this? God instructs the nation of Israel that each family should take a lamb on the tenth day of the month, which they will slaughter after four days, which would be the 14th of the month. And then, they should take the blood of the lamb and smear it on the doorposts and on the lintels, so that when the angel of death at midnight comes, he will pass over them, because they are under the blood. So when the midnight hour comes, and there is no blood on the doorposts, it meant that the angel could come in and kill the firstborn, because the plague was there to kill the firstborn of the land. So from the house of Pharaoh to the lowest peasant, even to the livestock, the firstborn were killed. But if there was the blood, then the people were safe. So the children of Israel had to adhere to this in order for them to be saved. So also with us, in order for us to be saved from the midnight hour of God's judgment, we need also to be hidden under the blood, which means we have to take the lamb in, which means we have to eat the flesh of the lamb, and then smear the blood of Christ and be under the blood, in order for us to be saved from God's judgment. So we will see that as we appreciate the Passover in the Old Testament, it speaks to us as well, because the Old Testament is the New Testament concealed. And so, therefore, there are many truths that we can glean from the initial instructions of God. So the feast was the foundation of their experience with God. The blood brought about their salvation. "And when I see blood, I will pass over you." This is what God says to the children of Israel, that when he sees the blood, he will pass over them, and death will not befall them. It is imperative, it cannot be emphasized enough, that we need to be in the blood of Christ. We need to be covered by the blood of Christ in order for us to be saved from God's judgment and wrath. So the Israelites were given specific instructions by God in order to meet the requirements of their salvation. So also with us, without Christ, the Christ says in his, in the word, he says, "Nobody gets to the Father except through me." So with us also, our salvation has a requirement. It requires that we accept the Lord Jesus Christ as our Lord and Savior in order for us to be saved, as Israel had to be saved from death by following the requirements of God. So also for us, in order to be saved, we need to follow the requirements of God. So the Passover then became an ordinance to be observed forever. This means that if you go to Israel now, you will find that the Passover is still celebrated. In fact, even us as children of God, who have entered salvation through grace and adopted as sons through grace, we also celebrate the Passover, and we now appreciate the work of the Passover, because God says, "And when I see the blood, I will pass over," which means also, death has passed over us. And so, we commemorate and celebrate the work of Christ. He says it, he mentions it explicitly in the book of Exodus, chapter 12, verse 24. He says, "And you shall observe this thing as an ordinance for you and your sons forever." So until Christ comes back, we will be celebrating the Passover. Now, let us look at the significance of the Passover. It was primarily a commemorative ordinance, reminding the children of Israel of their deliverance out of Egypt. So the Israelites were celebrating the Passover as a reminder of the work and power of God, and him setting them free from the oppression of the Egyptians. Yes, it was, but now, it is also a type of great deliverance executed by the Messiah for all his people, from the doom of death on account of sin, and from the bondage of sin itself, worse than the Egyptian bondage. So now, Passover is not just a celebration for the Jews only, but when we celebrate the Passover, we are celebrating and appreciating the salvation that was brought by Christ through his death. Because we may look at the oppression of the Egyptians as if it was a rough time, but the oppression that we were under is worse than that of the Egyptians, because it was oppression that was leading to eternal damnation, because we were oppressed by the enemy, meaning we could do nothing else except being arrested and enslaved by the enemy, and therefore, carrying out only his purpose. So Christ then became our Passover. He became our salvation, setting us free from the bondage of the enemy, as 1 Corinthians, chapter 5, verse 7b says, "For indeed, Christ, our Passover, was sacrificed for us." So Christ was sacrificed as that Passover lamb, in order for us to be set free from the bondage of the enemy. Let us look at the preparation for the Passover. Now, the appearance of Jerusalem on the occasion of the Passover in the time of our Lord is thus fittingly described. "The city itself and the neighborhood became more and more crowded as the feast approached. The narrow streets and dark-arsed bazaars showing the same throng of men of all nations as when Jesus had first visited Jerusalem as a boy." Now, a great picture that would give us an understanding of what was taking place here is the festive season. Now, when it's the festive season, everybody is home, and so, there's a lot of shopping being done, so the streets are packed, and everybody is excited. There is the excitement of the festive season, and everybody is happy and jolly. So it was the same here, because all Jews from all walks of life were back to Jerusalem to celebrate the Passover. So even the temple offered a strange sight at this season, for in parts of the outer courts, a wide space was covered with pens for sheep, goats, and cattle to be used for offerings. Sellers shouted, "The merits of their beasts, sheep bleated, oxen lode." So here now, it's like in the festive season again, where people or vendors and shops are selling products that are relevant to the season. So here also, you find that now the temple was packed, because now, the vendors and the sellers are selling everything that they know will be necessary for this time. So you find that there were money changers to exchange foreign currencies. There were vendors who were selling animals for sacrifices. So it is a busy place, and now, they are not doing this in a marketplace, but they're doing it in the temple. So they are in the outer courts of the temple. Hence, we find that Jesus now, in the book of Matthew 21:12, he comes in, it reads, "Then Jesus went into the temple of God, and drove out all those who bought and sold in the temple, and overturned the tables of the money changers and the seats of those who sold devils." You can just imagine, in the house of God, a place that was sacred, and now, it has become this bustling place, where people are shouting, because now, everybody is shouting at their top of their voices, because they want their product to be sold. So there was all of this noise and chaos in the temple courts, and Jesus came to rectify this, which is why he comes and he chases all these vendors away. And that created great noise in the temple or for the Pharisees, because now, they are questioning, "By what authority is he doing all of these things?" We will further look at this as we go on with the teachings on the series. So now, let us look at one important thing, God's time. So together with this liberation... So together with this liberation of Israel, God gave Israel a new calendar, a new beginning, a Jewish calendar. So we see that in the book of Exodus, chapter twelve, verse two, he says to the Israelites, this month shall be your beginning of months. It shall be the first month of the year to you. What does this mean? Now, God, having chosen the 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 nation of Israel, he then puts them into his time. Now, the world was carrying on um with the calculations of time, the way they had been calculating. But God says that to Israel that they should now step out of the time of the world and enter into his time, which is what God requires of us as well when we are born again or when we accept him as our Lord and Savior. Because we need to step out of the world, that even though the world is going in another direction, but we need to go in the direction that God is leading us. So we need to step out of the world and step into God. So now let us look at God's time. So according to Genesis, chapter one, verse five, it reads, it was evening and it was morning, the first day. What does this tell us? This tells us that God calculates a day by night first. Meaning from six P M of an evening is the beginning of the night, in is the beginning of the night of a new day. For example, if it is Tuesday at six P M in our time, um, our time is twelve o'clock Wednesday in their time. So what does this mean if we explain it? It says that for our time, um if we look at um the Gregorian calendar, this means that our time, our day starts at twelve o'clock midnight. So when we say twelve o'clock, we are then entering into a new day. For instance, today is Wednesday. We are still saying we are in Wednesday. And then at one second past twelve o'clock, we have entered into Thursday. However, if you look at God's time, God's time says we are already at we- at Thursday because we have passed six o'clock. So from six P M, you enter into a new day according to God's time. But in our time, you enter into a new day at one second past twelve o'clock. So uh the Gregorian calendar is the calendar that is used worldwide, that has months, January to February. As you may see, um we have their twenty twenty calendar, which uh has the months as you know it and the days in the month. So the Gregorian calendar uses the solar system um to calculate the days, the months and the years. So um let us look at what exactly this looks like. So the solar system um is right there on the top left, which is the sun and every object that moves around the sun, that orbits around the sun. We know mainly of the planets, you have your Mercury, Venus, Earth, Mars, uh Saturn, Uranus, Neptune, Jupiter and Pluto, although it is no longer a planet. But you have all these bodies and many, many other bodies. These are the bigger bodies that orbit the sun. Now, if you look at the the bottom image, it speaks of, it shows us the earth's orbit. What is an orbit? An orbit is the earth's movement around the sun or the revolution of the earth around the sun. Now, the earth not only moves around the sun, but it also rotates, meaning it spins. So when the earth spins, it creates a day. So a full uh spin or a full rotation of the earth speaks of a twenty-four hour day. However, when the earth moves around the sun, now we are moving into years. So if the a full orbit or a full revolution speaks of a year. So you find that um when the earth moves around the sun, it covers three hundred and sixty-five days and a quarter. We will see where that quarter goes, because I'm sure most of you are wondering what quarter are we talking about? Um but we will appreciate it as we go on. However, now, if you look at the Jewish calendar, which is contrary to ours, um so we were calculating using the sun and the movement around the sun. So for our months, they are calculated reliant on the movement of the sun, of the earth around the sun. However, with the Jewish system, they use the lunar calculation method called the lunar phase, which means they use the moon to mark the ending and beginning of a month. Now, the moon has phases. So the moon will be moving uh or will be showing different shapes in the different times of the month, dependent on how exposed it is to the sun. So when the moon moves from a new moon all the way and completes a cycle all the way back to a new moon, that covers a month. And that month will be uh twenty-nine days and a half. So the Jewish month would then have uh twenty-nine days and a half. Now you already see that there's a problem there, because that means that they do not have um enough days to cover a full year, because twenty-nine days and a half gives us three hundred and fifty-four days in a year. So how do we compensate for this? Remember, we said that when our, when the earth moves around the sun to calculate our year, we have that quarter. So the earth, the earth travels around the sun three hundred and sixty-five days and a quarter. So what do we do with that quarter? We wait for four years and after four years, then we have a leap year. So on the fourth year, we have a leap year to compensate for those quarters that we did not count all the other years. So how do the Jews uh deal with their uh deficit? So when we add uh a day in the leap year, which we add um in February, because we know February has twenty-eight days, but in a leap year it has twenty-nine days, as was the case um this year, twenty twenty, it which is a leap year, so we had twenty-nine days in February. So what do the Jews do? So while we add a day after four years, the Jews, they add a lunar month every three years. So that means they add a month every three years, unlike us. So let us now look at the Jewish day. So we said that our day starts at twelve o'clock midnight and we cover the twenty-four hours in in order for us to enter into a new day. So the Jews start their day according to God's time, because God changed their calendar and he changed the way they calculate time. So now their day starts um at six P M. On our day, while we still have an old day at six P M, they have a new day. This will help us as we carry on with our teachings. Some may be wondering, why are we learning about their days? But you will see how this affects us. Um when we celebrate the Passover, you'll note that every year, the Passover changes dates in our Gregorian calendar. That is because we are not aligned with the Jewish calendar. Their Passover is always on the same day, the fourteenth of Nisan. But for us, in order for us to match our day with theirs, we have to adjust the Passover accordingly, so that we match theirs. So their time and our time does not match. So we have to improvise in order for us to get into God's time. So I'm sure most of us always wondering, uh why is the Passover moving so much? And maybe most of us are just rushing the holidays. But this time is dependent on the Jews and on God's time, because it speaks of a great work that was done by God for his people. So understanding these calculations is vital in helping us to rightly divide the word according to the culture and the context. Now, you will see that uh different cultures do different, certain things differently. For instance, um if you look at shepherding, if you look at South African shepherding and shepherding in the Middle East, it is totally different. Our shepherds follow the livestock, they follow the sheep. Whereas in in the in the Middle East, the shepherd go before the sheep. If you get to appreciate or know this, then you appreciate scriptures like when the Lord says he is the good shepherd. When he calls himself the shepherd, then you get to appreciate properly. Because in our culture, it limits our understanding. But when you get to go into the Jewish culture and you see what God meant or in the context of the word, then you are able to appreciate the meaning of scripture. So we do this also, so that we're able to rightly divide the word of God. Because second Timothy, chapter two, verse fifteen B says, a worker who does not need to be ashamed, rightly dividing the word of truth. So this helps us not to misinterpret scripture, but to get the true meaning of what God was saying or is saying to us. For we cannot approach God from our perspective in an effort to understand his. Therefore, we need to confirm, to conform to his standard so that so as to handle correctly his word of truth. So in order for us to understand God's things, we cannot use our mind, but we need to step into God and we need to see through his eyes. We need to be able to appreciate his view, which is why it's important to always pray to God and ask him, Lord, help me to see the way you see. This helps us even with people. Because sometimes you will have people that you will not understand why they're present in your life and you want to get rid of them. But when you pray and ask God, help me to see them through your eyes, you are able to then trust God for whatever it is that he wants to achieve through them. Now, let us look at the most debated uh time of all times. We are looking at the crucifixion of Christ. So we are looking at the three days and three nights. Now, when you look at our calendar, it is very confusing to most of us. Because it gives us Saturday, uh it gives us Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So our Passover is uh Good Friday and Saturday and Sunday. So this is all wrong, unfortunately. Let us look at how it it is. If God dies, or if the Lord Jesus dies on a Friday and he wakes and is risen by Sunday, if we do the math, we realize that it is impossible for him to have stayed three days and three nights in the tomb. So let us first, before um we look at the calculations, let us look at two feasts. There are two feasts here that we have to appreciate in order for us to get to an understanding of when Christ died. There is the Passover, which was instituted by God for the Israelites before they uh left Egypt. And then there is a feast that God also instituted called the Feast of Unleavened Bread. Now, this feast was to take place immediately after the Passover. Meaning that um on the following day, it was literally now the Feast of Unleavened Bread. Now, this feast uh began with a high Sabbath, meaning that nobody had to do any work on the first day of the feast and and the last day. This feast was to last seven days. So the first day of the feast and the last day of the feast was a time where people had to uh uh celebrate or acknowledge what is called the High Sabbath. So beyond the weekly Sabbath that they had to observe, there was now a High Sabbath in addition to it. So if we look at the calculations, now Passover or the fourteenth of Abib would have been on a Wednesday. This is a shock to most of us, but Passover would have been on a Wednesday. So Christ um enjoyed the Passover meal with his disciples um on when, on the evening, which would have been a Wednesday. For us, it would have been a Tuesday evening, but it was a Wednesday for the Jews. So he had his uh supper with his disciples and then he was betrayed by Judas. And then um he was taken to the courts. And then in the day of Wednesday, the fourteenth of uh Nisan or Abib, this is when um Christ was crucified. We will note that from twelve um P M to three P M, this is when uh it went dark, the whole world went dark. And so this was a time when um priests would be slaughtering the Passover lambs um that would have been brought by the children of Israel. However, they could not do this, because it was dark, because the true Passover lamb um had died on the cross. So um Christ then uh being dead, you find um that as we mentioned, that the following day was the Sabbath, it was the High Sabbath. Now usually or normally, the people that were hung or crucified on the cross would have been left for about eight to ten hours to die um through the pain and the suffering that they went through. But now the Pharisees, being concerned that the following day was the Passover, could not leave the bodies on the cross. So they asked Pilate that the bones of the people hanging on the cross be broken so that um the people would die faster. So they wanted Jesus and the criminals to die faster. And so um the soldiers went now and started breaking the bones of the the criminals. But once they got to the Lord Jesus, they found that he was already dead, which was also still in fulfillment of scripture. Because one of the requirements that God spoke to the children of Israel was that there should be no bone that should be broken on the lamb. And so Christ's bones were also not broken, because he had already died. And so now, when Christ had died, which is still Wednesday, um the Jews, um while Joseph of Arimathea comes to Pilate and he asks him to give him the body of Jesus. So Joseph and Nicodemus rushed to bury the body in a new tomb that had not been used. So they put Jesus in the tomb on what we would say Wednesday evening. So then he spent the night, which would have been, according to the Jews, it would have been the first night, which was Thursday. So he spends the first night, um which is our uh Wednesday night, but the Jews' uh Thursday night. So he spends the first night, uh and then he spends the second night on Friday from six P M to six A M, that is the second night. And he spends the third night from six P M on Friday to six A M on Saturday. Now, those are the three nights. When we look at the days, uh from Thursday, six A M to six P M on Friday, um the, sorry, to six, yes, six P M, according to the Jews, it would have been Friday. But for uh us, it would have been Thursday. So six A M on Thursday to six P M, that would have been the first day. And Friday, six A M to six P M, that would have been the second day. And Saturday, six A M to six P M, that would have been the third day. So now, when it was evening, six P M, which would have been now the start of a new day for the Jews, which would have been Sunday, Christ was resurrected. So that in the morning of this first day, Christ was no longer in the tomb. So now, now let us look at the women who found the Lord Jesus in the tomb. So they could not move when Christ had been buried, because he was buried um in the evening of Wednesday, which meant then that immediately after he was buried, it was now the beginning of a High Sabbath, which meant that nobody can move. So they were not able to do anything, they were not able to embalm the Lord or acquire the spices to embalm the Lord. So Friday was now a workday or a free day, because the High Sabbath was on a Thursday. So then comes Friday, which is a workday. And what do the women do? The women now go and acquire the spices that are needed in order to embalm the bodies. Now, one may say, but it doesn't take a whole day to get spices. But now, if you look at the Jewish culture, it required a lot of spices, large quantities of spices um for um embalming, and they needed to be mixed. So the women used the Friday to acquire the spices and mix them, because this was a laborious work that took a lot of time. So the women um then mixed this. And on Saturday, this would have now been the week. this would have now been the weekly Sabbath, meaning yet again, the women were not able to move about. So this means that they were then stuck again and not able to go into the tomb of Christ. So they had to wait for the first day of the week, which is why now when they show up on the first day of the week, Christ is risen because we did the calculations. And according to our calculations, on Sunday, Christ had already been raised from the dead. So when the women go um in search uh or with the intention of embalming the body, they do not find Christ because Christ had spent his three days and three nights in the tomb. So now we will take this journey um as we continue with the teachings to actually go into detail as to what took place in each and every instance um that the Lord experienced upon the entry, the triumphal entry into Jerusalem and what happened to him and what he experienced and what he had to go through, even though he knew what, what his end was. In fact, it is so touching to see that although Christ came to do a work that would benefit us, we were the very ones who were rejecting him. But that did not stop him, it did not stop him from carrying out his assignment. If ever there is a le- a lesson that we need to learn from Christ is that no matter what people say, no matter what they do, what it is that God requires of you, that you should carry out at whatever cost, even if you are doing it for people who are rejecting you. But if it is what God requires of you, that is what you need to do and what you need to be focused on. Fix your eyes on Jesus and do his will, that is what should drive us. Amen. God bless you.